Part of.
I'm there. I'm there.
All right, let's call in order 631. Please stand. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, roll call, Mr. Bartlett.
Here.
This is Graves.
Here.
Dr. Lewis.
Here.
This is Rankin.
Mr. Stelzer.
Here.
Mr. York.
Here.
All right, any questions regarding the minutes from the October the 11th meeting? I'll work that over.
Yep.
Any changes and questions? We've got a long minutes this time. So, ready your motion in a second to accept the minutes, please.
So, a second.
Oh, you have a second. Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Graves.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. Stelzer.
Aye.
Mr. York.
I'm sorry, I abstained, I wasn't here.
Oh, you abstained.
Sorry about that.
That's true. All right. All right, in communications tonight, we've got Mr. Bob Vanstone's going to the office to report, Bob, you got any comments or remarks about that? It's apparently well laid out report to give this time. Anybody else got any questions?
Thank you for doing that.
Yes, very much.
Good work.
His note says that we're still doing a search for the permanent replacement, the bottom of, Bob's note says that.
That is done, sorry, go ahead.
Do you want to comment on that, Kelly? You want to bring something up on where we are in the search?
Sure, so, we met with Rod Holloway and offered and he accepted the position.
Good.
And so, he's going to start November 1st, and then Bob has graciously said he will stay on, go ahead, a month, well, or whatever, you know.
He's trying to do to just carry on, and I'm going to try and clean up some of the backlog, there's a couple issues that I don't think be fair to drop on him because he's learning the process.
Okay, great, that's great news, great news.
Yeah, we have a good plan for getting him acclimated and up and running and.
Several wins over that.
Yeah, yeah, no, it sounds like it, it sounds like it'll be really good, and thank you again, Bob.
Whatever it takes.
Thank you again, Bob, for all the work you've done here on this area, so.
All right, did, uh, pool commission meeting minutes, y'all look those over? I was going to make a couple of comments, I was at that meeting, although I don't want to, Joe, I don't want to crouch in on any remarks that you're making regarding this.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Essentially, there was, the gist of the discussion at the meeting was whether or not, how to proceed with replacing either a pool manager at the pool or a pool management company. And so, there's a lot of discussion back and forth, I think essentially what we're going to do is we're going to pursue both avenues, potentially for an individual pool manager, possibly that would be a resident of the village, or outside of the village for that matter, or a professional pool management company like SwimSafe or one of the like. And Joe has met down there with, I think SwimSafe, and I met with the city pool, I don't have their names exact.
Sounds like Pool Management Company.
Pool Management Company. They both offer a range of activities and things that they would do for the pool, all the way from, unless they complete and total management of the pool, opening to closing kind of thing, they run the pump rooms, the chemicals, all the facilities, you know, that kind of thing, so. Or there may be, there may be a hybrid solution where we would have individuals sort of be the face of the management, and then the pool company, the professional pool managers would be sort of a behind the scenes activity, they'd run, you know, like the mechanicals of the pool and other things.
Staffing and stuff like that.
Staffing, possibly, things like that, and then separately, and this is like an area, I know this is a little area, that Joe and I, well, actually, more Joe than me, we really, I think it's desirable to try and keep the concession stand as a separate standing entity, so to speak, and have 365 concession, that would just be one example of an independently run concession stand, you know, where it would be various arrangements with, you know, we would share in the profits and so on and so forth. The idea, of course, would be, basically, so that, you know, that's been a source of a loss of revenue for the pool, we would want to, of course, bring that to a close.
Right.
Not only financially, but also it would be very desirable to have a better review selection down there and have a better, ultimately, a better pool experiments. So, we're going to be pursuing that as well. Now, the pool management company could run the concession stand, that would be something that would be part of what we would look at in that regard, but depending on how that would be or how that would play out, we're also going to pursue separately somebody to run the concession stand. Now, as I understand it, though, and Ed, you're going to have to help on this one, I believe we need a resolution to allow us to go out to bid for the pool management company because of the size of the, the potential size of the contract.
Oh, okay.
Am I correct?
You're correct, yes.
Okay.
I prepared one to say, I don't know if you got it, I'm going to.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we get it, did we get that? Here we did, didn't see it.
Because this thing, the schedule here says when to post the thing.
Let me ask you a detailed question on that, so, basically, all we're doing is putting this out for bid at this point, we're not entering into a contract yet.
Correct.
So, we won't know if it's going to exceed, isn't it $50,000 is the threshold for, we won't know if it's going to exceed $50,000 until somebody comes back and bids an amount higher than that.
That's correct.
So, I mean, do we have to do the resolution now, or do we wait to see what comes back? Because we may not even go with the pool management companies if we're going to hire a pool manager.
Yeah, I think you can certainly wait if you want to, but then if somebody does come back that we like and it's going to be over 50, we very well would have to rebid, so.
But the question is, can we go ahead and place ads in newspapers or at other locations for a pool management company?
Sure.
Without the resolution.
Without the resolution.
Yeah, you can go ahead and do that, but what Joe's saying, what if it comes back at over $50,000?
Well, there's no doubt, there's going to be a whole process on the back end of this about figuring out, are we going to go with a pool management company or go with a pool manager? And at that point, then we bring it back to council for the final decision and the resolution and all the rest of stuff.
What if we just did a resolution next time, at the next meeting?
But what's your resolution going to be, just so we're sending the RFP out? We've already sent it out.
Well, actually, I pulled it back because there was, there was some confusion as to whether or not we needed a resolution.
Oh.
Okay, it's news made, so.
But if we, if we don't, and first thing tomorrow, we can, we can replace it, replace ads.
But I don't know if we, again, I want to go back to what Ed has said, so.
Yeah, my thing is, if it does come back at over $50,000, then I think you've got to go back to square one, don't you? You can't say, okay, we like what this guy's saying, we're going to go ahead and accept it, even though we didn't really.
Say we were going to do that.
Have a resolution saying we're going to do that.
Like with the lawn service contract, we put it out for bid.
Right.
And the bids come back.
Right.
We select a vendor, and then we go through the resolution process to approve the bid. But at least we have basically given everybody an opportunity to bid on the, on the RFP.
But that's not over 50,000.
Oh, yeah, it is.
It has been.
Oh, the what, oh, I'm thinking of lawn, not trash.
Can I prepare a resolution saying to go out for bid for the lawn service contract or the street contract?
Well, again, I think we might be getting confused on what the rules are, the rules, I thought, was 50, anything in excess of $50,000, you need a resolution on, you know, a contract, contractual arrangement.
Right.
To do the bids, I don't know that you have to have a resolution to do that, I mean, I mean, we could do it, just put suspenders on it if you want to.
I'm sorry to talk over to Joe, I walked by that today, I think as long as you send it out for public bid, you have to be at least two weeks, not more than four weeks, but you know, this has to be.
Right.
If you hire somebody that's over 50 grand, then we'll need a resolution to say, hey, we're going to hire this particular company. I think that will streamline the process.
Yeah, yeah, because I don't think, I don't think we've done resolutions just to put it out to bid in the past.
I don't think we have either, but Tony's suggesting to me that maybe we did, frankly, I just couldn't.
Actually, I think Chris will kind of weigh in on that, too, because that's where a little bit of this confusion came from, as to whether or not we had to have a resolution to actually put it out.
Yeah.
To place the ads.
But just like, like the lawn care, I don't think we put a resolution to put it out to bid, did we?
Yeah.
Because that came out of Public Works, and I don't think you did that for that.
No, we did it after we awarded it.
That's more than $50,000.
Yeah, a little bit more.
Of what, no, the lawn care was 46. So, it came in under 50. Yeah, it's, yeah.
Again, I don't care if you think it's a better process to do it at this point, I mean, I think, I think that's actually been shared already, that RFP, so the cat's, the cat's out of the bag to some extent.
Not only that, but it got confusing because for the RFP, did we need a resolution, but for a pool manager, we really wouldn't.
Now, here's what I've always said, again, it's transparency is so very important, and I think what we're doing here with the RFP, even though we may not necessarily have a resolution saying they go out for an RFP, I think we're okay to get it out right now, but as Joe says, if we select the company, it's going to be over $50,000, and we'll prepare a resolution saying we're going to hire that company to do it.
I would classify where we're at right now as information gathering, because we have no idea what those bids are going to come back at, and if, you know, we need that piece of information to figure out where we're going, and we also need to figure out is whether there's a viable candidate out there for the pool manager position. That's going to be a little bit of trouble trying to find somebody, A, that's qualified, and B, that's, you know, willing to take that job, you know, especially for, you've got to find somebody who has their summers off.
Like a teacher.
But again, the teachers at this point, that old business model about using a teacher for the pool doesn't happen anymore, a lot of them aren't willing to do it, so.
And it doesn't.
Not willing to do it, but the second part of it, too, is being qualified, you know, being able to hire the lifeguards, being able to train the lifeguards, you know, that, you know, you get into that issue as you go on. So, again, this is about information gathering, no decisions are made about which path to go down, but it's, we're trying to do this on a faster timeframe, and the RFP that got put together, we basically had RFPs that probably six different communities had issued already, which we used as a template, have you all seen the RFP? Have you seen it?
I have, yeah, it's pretty all encompassing.
Yeah, I mean, it was very well done, and it was tailored for the Merrymont pool, so, you know, I think we're in pretty good shape at this point.
I agree. Well, let's do it, let's put it out tomorrow.
By me, because it works in the timeline, we are on sort of a bit of a timeline here, and this is, this would be better, so.
We need something done that's able to work.
We're trying to get this done before the holidays.
Yeah, they really want to get this done.
About the holidays?
Yeah, no, it was talked at one point, why wait, you know, if you get into next year, it'll drag into February and March, and you really want this thing set up to be able to plan and be able to do it, you know, start the first of the year on it, but that's kind of where the timeline came about, trying to get this done before the holidays.
It's customary, those companies like that commitment, because they have to find resources.
They do, yeah, yeah. They would, they would like it sooner rather than later.
Right.
Yeah. All right, we'll do it.
All right, and then, a couple things, I did share the pool operations, financial analysis that, you know, we kind of put together, looking at the numbers over a historical basis, and then there was one question that has been going on for probably the last month about the $125,000 that we allocated out of the permanent improvement fund for capital improvements at the pool, what we've been caught up in is a little bit of a classification issue, that as monies were spent down there, some of those capital improvements went to the general fund and not to the permanent improvement fund, and that's why I put the little box on the outside of this, updated and sent it this time, which shows that we have basically stayed within budget for the pool for 2021, with all the work that's been done down there, and have a little bit of excess at this point, but there's a couple real unknowns we're trying to deal with. One is the leak detection and repairs, and Bill, I think you sent me a text, you got an update on that that we found?
I was, I was down there the other morning when we had Shamrock, of course, back down there, and we had the guys with the cameras, you know, shooting the pipes, and it's, it's looking like a leak repair down there could be extensive. Now, we don't have a fixed estimate yet because we haven't read, we haven't read the footage that they shot, you know, of the drain, but it, you know, the general consensus down there was, it doesn't look good. The, we're talking about the drain from the lap pool to that manhole air break, you know, before the line goes on down to the pump room, so.
Well, because, yeah, the notes you hear is up to nine potential leaks?
No, not in that pipe, some of the other leaks are minor leaks and little welds in the main pool, and those are easily fixed.
Okay.
And some of them, you know, where the steel liner joins the concrete floor kind of a thing, those are somewhat easily fixed, in these, inside these drain pipes, that's a whole different ballgame to fix.
Yep.
Yeah.
I don't know if you'll be able to line those drain pipes or what, you're going to have to dig to get to them.
You might, you might, yeah.
Right, so, but again, we've already incurred some costs there with Shamrock during the last seven, eight weeks, as we've been kind of going through this process.
Right.
So, that's a big open item on this schedule about, are we going to stay within budget or not? You know, as of right now, we're okay, we're within the budget, even though we'll have to figure out how to move it between funds, I mean, probably what'll happen at the end of the year, we'll have extra money in the permanent improvement fund to spend next year, but, you know, the, the, the numbers are there as far as what, you know, we've spent at the pool this year, but there's a couple unknowns there, so, if anybody has any questions on the numbers, I tried to put this together, gathering as much information, I think, Tony, you looked at it, and you're comfortable that I've kind of got this stuff laid out in the right cells and the right amounts, but again, we have been spending money on the water, there's no doubt as you look at the numbers over the years.
No question.
So, fixing the leaks, and I am very concerned about the leaks, is that it's not only the water that we're wasting every year, at probably five to $7,000 a year, it's the damage that is going behind.
So, where's the water going?
Exactly.
Nobody knows where the water goes.
And it could be undermining.
Yeah.
The integrity of the pools.
Right.
So, it's something that has to be fixed.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
So.
As soon as I get numbers, of course, I'll share with everybody.
Thanks, hey, Joe, thanks for the budget reconciliation, too, that's really helpful to see you now, so.
All right, we kind of skipped over Randy there, Randy, you want to go ahead and tell us about the town crier surveys?
Yeah, well, this is an idea, I think we kind of talked about this a couple meetings ago, I did talk to Susie Reilman, the editor, she's off for this, as you know, that we changed, we used to publish council minutes in the town crier, and again, that goes back to when they weren't available anywhere else, so we suspended that in their space, and we've done some things a little bit differently, one of the things we're thinking about doing and we like to do is surveys, and this is where we'd set up a bogus email account that I guess would mirror the info, it would merge with that, so where we could ask questions, every, a question poll, whatever it might be, not every issue, but we could do it certainly every issue.
Sure.
We would put a disclaimer that said that this, this is not a monitored email address, so if you have a question or whatever, contact the mayor, your council member, or a council member, and then we'd have to manage how these input for the residents is managed once we get it. But I had a couple suggestions of some questions we could ask, one of them was the idea of no parking on specific streets for leaf collection, we could still do that, when I talked to Susie, she said if I get this back to her tonight, she could put it in November.
That'd be nice, yeah, okay.
It could come out in a week.
Yeah.
So, I just came up with mindful Merrymont as a name, I'm sure we could do better than that, but.
For a start, it's a start.
And then, you know, the email address could be any, just about anything that we want, and I had some examples there, so, I guess, I'd like to move forward with this, and I'd like your approval to do it, I'd like to do it in November, and I'd like to probably start with the leaf collection, because the other was at the pool, and that's a bit premature to probably talk about that.
So, it would come out November 10th, I think is, or it's a deadline to 10th, so it would come out.
No, it was, October 10th was the deadline.
Right, that's right, for the following issue.
So, it's the first weekend in November.
Okay.
No parking on your street for up to a week, so, I have one suggestion, Randy.
Sure.
Just to consider, I used to write surveys for a living, and typically, like a yes or no, isn't going to give you, so you might want to be on a scale of one to 10 or one to five, how likely would you be to agree, just so you kind of get a feeling for what's out there. That's my two cents worth.
How would we manage that, if, let's say people came back and said, yeah, like, let's, no parking on the street for the week, like, they come every week, but we don't know when, like, how would you, if they?
Well, this is just to kind of get a feel for if folks are open about it or not.
Okay.
Clearly, John would need to implement and do all of this, and there'd be quite a bit of coordination on his part, but he said, he sat here and said, the reason leaf pickup is a disaster is because we have to go around cars, so, if people are willing to not park, and that would expedite that process, and I think overall, people would be happier. No, I'm not.
But I think we're obvious heads of no, too, I agree with that, is that, you know, it would be really helpful would be if John could say what streets on what day of the week.
Well, I think we'll get to that.
Yeah, because I think you'd have to, you'd come every week, so that if you say you can't park for the week, then you can't ever park on the street ever from October through November, so I just was curious, just the management piece, but I get it, I get that, makes sense.
So, what I'm seeing here is I think you're looking for feedback.
Sure.
At the end of the day, so, to sit there and ask, you know, one sentence or two-sentence question like that, some of these issues, especially like the pool memberships, opening up to people on the outside, is a little more complex as far as what the items you should consider when you make that decision one way or the other, so like on this leaf pickup, yeah, I think part of the problem is that, you know, this, this parking issue that we have, but the other problem we probably have is the residents don't really know when people are coming by to pick up their leaves, so I don't know if you'd lead these questions in with a paragraph, kind of explaining what the issues we have right now, including, you know, potentially asking them, would you like to know when your leaves are going to be picked up?
I think we already know.
Well, yeah, we know we want that, yeah.
But there's been a pushback that, no, we can't commit to those days.
But I, but I would say that if we, if we get no parking on the streets, John could get to those streets.
But what you're, the question you're asking here, Randy, is for people not to park on a week because, you know, they don't know when they're going to show up, why can't they be told, don't park there this day because we're coming that day to pick up the leaves?
Yeah, we've asked, we've asked John to, to try and start to do that, right? I think, though, you make a really good point, Joe, about like, maybe outlining a little bit of the issue, because someone might read this and they don't understand that it takes longer, the reason my leaf pickup takes longer is because they have to go around the cars, so maybe just explaining a little bit of the brief.
More context.
More context, and then the question.
Right, a little back, yeah, a little backstory to why you're asking the question.
Especially if you're going to ask an open-ended question, not a yes/no.
Right.
Give them at least the background to be able to make, you know.
Yeah.
I just, I don't know that we could say.
Valiant comments.
Up to a week, but on the, on here, I don't know.
Maybe just say a couple days.
Yeah.
Or, because you don't want to just make it one day, because, you know, like John says, I would like us to see to be able to have some kind of commitment to a timeframe, but if you just do one day and it storms, or one of the temporary guys calls in, you know, I mean, things can change in a heartbeat.
That's where the problem, you know, trying to narrow it down to one specific day, you know.
Right, you can't, yeah.
Something's a little rise, they can't get to it that day, and then if they forecast out several days on several streets, then that whole schedule's gummed up.
Yep.
And so, but, but yes, I know what, I know, you know, there's a way where it could be narrowed down somewhat more tightly, yeah.
And then like once, would like, then the police have to go and put no parking signs on the streets, no, not to park?
I would assume so, or something like that, you know.
I mean, it is just, you know.
Or, I mean, we just say north of the pike, the beginning of the week, south of the pike, the second part of the week, I don't know, just anything to narrow it down somewhat, I mean.
Somewhat.
I get it, you can't pinpoint it to a day, because you're just shooting yourself in the foot by doing that, but a little more closer parameters would be nice.
So, but stepping back, I mean, it sounds like everyone's supportive of what Randy's proposing.
Oh, yeah, we got in the details.
Now, we're getting into more like the details, but I mean, stepping back, I think, what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is everyone's like, yeah, let's, let's do this.
Yeah.
But conceptually, yeah.
Conceptually.
Now, it's just the executional, this is very first one, is the question.
Yeah, and so, and these would be things, though, that you would work with council before it would ever go in.
Sure, sure, and it could be, you know, a number, it could be just about anything, and I think that, I was surprised, so that Sentinel Committee, you know, and I thought that you could do these in the email blast as well.
We could.
The same thing, because when we did the Sentinel Committee, I think there were 10 that responded to the email.
Right, yeah, right off.
And like two that responded to the pay, the town crier, so it was, it was interesting that people, and it's probably a more engaged populace that have opted into those, so.
I have an idea.
Okay.
You don't get your leaves picked up if you're not subscribed to get the emails.
So, are we giving Randy, though, Randy wants to try and get this in the town crier for this coming November, right, so are we?
Yeah.
Okay with him doing something around this with the leaves, I mean, I.
I think it's just a little context, and then.
Ask the date.
No, no, he said, he talked to Susie, and Susie said, if he gets it to her tonight, she can include it.
Okay, okay, so.
So, let's not make Randy do this at midnight.
Be writing it down as we're sitting.
I'm taking copious notes here.
Okay.
As long as they're copious.
Can I ask one question?
What about the name, any, any?
I like the I love Merrymont at Merrymont.org.
Yeah, or here's an idea, I like, here's an idea, too, I think the other two are a little.
I mean, we don't want to give them too much hope that we're going to listen.
Yeah, how about like, what?
Yeah, I like the I love Merrymont, I think that's.
What, here's an idea, what, yeah, I love Merrymont.
There's other ones that I thought of that.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, no, I think, I mean, that's good, what, can I just ask another question about just the more specifics of this leaf one, like, you know, there are probably, depending upon where you live in the village, more people have to say yes on the streets that don't have the parking issues comparative to some of the streets that do have the parking issues, I mean, so what comes back if this is an overall like positive, but it was, you know, the more minority of the citizens that have the issues, there's no weight there, I guess?
Yeah, it's definitely going to impact.
Yeah, on streets with, on streets with parking issues.
Like settle, for example.
That's going to be very sensitive.
More so than like.
Way more so.
Yeah.
They're going to want to know to the hour, to the minute.
Yeah.
How long do they have to have that car off the street, you know.
But you think of center and, and a lot of those, I mean, it could solve a lot of issues.
Yeah, a lot of issues, yeah, because they're working around that, true.
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
All right, y'all see a letter from Kellogg's, the worker adjustment retaining notification, which is a fancy way to basically tell us what they're going to be doing with the layoffs which is a fancy way to basically tell us what they're going to be doing with the layoffs down there. Essentially, this is partially good news, because it, as I read it, it sort of sounds as though, they're talking about laying off 73 permanent employees. Now, the problem is that Joe drafted a bit of a response because we had talked with these people on the phone a couple of weeks prior, and they had sort of notified us that they'd already lost, I think I already told you guys this, they'd already lost maybe 100 people, you know, just through natural attrition, you know, guys seeking other work and so on and so forth, because the job market being what it is. So I would assume that it's that, we've got, they've lost that 100, and they're not coming back, plus another 73, so let's just say it's maybe 173, 175.
Bill, did you see your email today?
I did see the email today.
So there's another 43 voluntary retirements, so it's about a 216 number overall.
We're still, though, a shade under that original 250 number that I think we'd heard, you know, way back in January, something like that. So what I would like to get from them is, because these numbers are jumping around, is what is the remaining employment down there going to be? You know, are we going to, is it 300, is it 350, you know, out of what I think was originally about 550 or something?
530.
Or 530. She's, Tracy Meow, she sort of left the door open that I'll either contact or email her back to see if I can get that number. But it's not, I guess what I'm trying to say is, it's not looking quite as bad as it, as we originally thought.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I need a little bit of good news that we can bring in here.
Yeah, take what we get.
All right. Any other comments regarding any of these communications? We all good with it? All right, all right. Permission to address council. Anyone would like to address council this evening? Mr. Vanstone?
I'm Bob Vanstone, 4050 Lidle Woods Place. There's been a lot of discussion concerning spending and finances on the council. There should also be discussion of wasted expenditures. Based on the request at the last council meeting, the cost associated with the study and investigation of the fire department issues totaled $173,904. This includes the cost of Mr. Kramer, our consultant, the solicitor, along with village employees in the fire department, police department, and related administrative support. With a little bit of effort with the fire department, much of this could have been eliminated. When a candidate for council reelection publicly brags about saving the village over $155,000, he does not consider the additional expenses that have been incurred. In addition, he has stated in council that he saved $40,000 in the building department, which has not occurred and has not been documented. These two expenditures alone dropped the savings and added expenses to a total of almost $214,000, which is $59,000 more than that reported savings. In addition, this and similar crusades have demoralized the employees of the village. The latest shoe to drop has been discussed already tonight is the resignation of the pool supervisor. This was an unforced error will result in potential issues with pool operations and spending significant amount of time and possibly money to rate the ship. These kinds of divisive activities must stop.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else? Bill?
Good evening. I'm Bill Kramer. I was honored to do your study for the fire department. I'm not officially on the agenda tonight. I think we're going to do that at a later time. But I'm very pleased to be here, and I'll be around afterwards if individually any council members would want to talk to me, get you up to date. I have met three or four times with fire chief, and we've discussed ways we can economize going down the line based on the model that was approved at your last meeting. So thank you again for the opportunity to serve this fine community.
And thanks for sticking with us. You know, I know some of this, this sort of going-forward work that you're going to, you know, help consult with is generous on your part. I want to thank you for that.
Well.
We will have you back in here, I think, on the 20.
Second?
Twenty-second, right. I'll be out of town for your next meeting. I'll be back the 20-second.
I'll have it on the agenda, and we can discuss any questions at greater length, you know, regarding that final report.
Fine, okay.
Hey, Bill, you said you had some suggestions, the things we might be able to do to save money within the current structure, maintaining the current structure. Can you send it in advance, can you email it to the Hall of Council in advance so people have a chance to read it and think about it?
Be happy to do that, sure.
That would be great. Just in advance of the 20-second, so everyone has a chance to look through that beforehand.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Phil.
Thanks. Anybody else? No? All good. All right, let's pace some bills. Everybody looked over the bills?
Mm-hmm.
Questions regarding the bills?
Nope.
No?
Nope, not here.
Well, I, sort of related, no, no, just related. So do we have an update, Joe, on like the Murray path, how much more we have to spend and how that's, how that stands overall? And the reimbursements we've received yet from Hamilton County?
So the numbers that I shared, I don't know, 60 days ago, are probably still valid.
Okay.
We're in the process of grading right now. We had a little bit of a rainstorm yesterday that caused a little bit of problems with some of the storm sewers. The key swing number right now is the amount of topsoil that has to come in. That was the item that's probably going to drive the number one way or the other. The good news is, we haven't used that much topsoil, so we may be, you know, again, those numbers in the past, and I can share this, I actually just updated the schedule.
Okay.
Over the weekend, but we're still within the same range and probably won't need that supplementary amount that we talked about, you know, the $15,000, that will be able to cover all the costs of the Murray path through the private contributions, through the contributions from ODNR and the contributions from Columbia Township. So that should cover all the costs associated with the Murray path, unless we run into some more problems here the next couple of weeks. We are going to put stakes and barriers up for the Flying Pig, because, you know, we ran out of time. They're out there planting stuff probably this week, not only the trees, but probably the flower beds. And we know people like to line the marathon course, so we're going to try to keep them out of the recently planted stuff. We're probably not going to seed until next week, depending upon what happens with the weather. But as of right now, the numbers, and that's why I didn't share with you, because the numbers are still in line, but we still need to know what's going to happen with that topsoil number. And it sounds like now we're probably going to have to spend possibly $500 more to drop a couple of the storm sewers that aren't at the right height, so. But, you know, we're within what was anticipated on that schedule I shared, I don't know, 45, 60 days ago.
Hopefully not too much of the topsoil washed away over there.
I have a question regarding the Flying Pig. So what kind of barrier are we going to use?
We're going to use stakes with string in between them. It's the most cost-effective. I got an email out to the executive director of the Flying Pig to see if they're going to reimburse us for those costs, so we'll see where that gets to.
Actually, Joe, I talked to Matt Air about that today. We may not have to do as much of that as we anticipate, because I think the only planting that's going to take place between now and the pig are the trees.
Right.
So we might just stake off the tree area.
We could, we could stake the whole area with rope for probably about $225, is what we worked out some numbers on.
Yeah, I think it's all or nothing.
What's that?
Probably just as easy.
Yeah.
Well, again, if they don't have a seed down, it really isn't going to impact.
It's not going to impact anything. If they want to get their feet muddy, I guess get in the mud, but.
But people do line that area.
Yeah. Oh, they're in there, yeah.
It's kind of like.
Very muddy.
They get to see it both ways, coming in and out, so. But we do have a solution that's reasonable, and we may actually get reimbursed by the Flying Pig for that. So there was an email, still waiting for a response.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, chief.
Joe, did you, is John Capella, Capella's team talked to you? Yeah, I just had an organizational meeting with the Flying Pig people last week, and we talked about that particular issue, and they are very committed to keeping people off of that, so I think, and they're, they're great people to work with. I've been working with them for years, so, yeah. And John's a real good guy to deal with, too, so I don't know how much.
Yeah, about three weeks ago, he was all in about, you know, the barrier and all the rest of the stuff, and I asked him if he could bring in the orange barriers and all that, and he said, no, I mean, that would probably be overkill. If we get stakes with ropes, we'll keep them out of that area, and it'll be all effective means of doing it. So, and again, we found stakes reasonably priced. String is obviously not very expensive, so $250, $200.
Again, whether we stake it or not, I don't think, the concern is not going to be as great. If only the trees are in, and, you know what I mean, like if the seed were down, boy, we'd really want to keep them out.
Oh, yeah.
But the seed's not going until next week.
Yeah, I don't, that's what I understand.
We're so far behind on schedule, it's not going until next week.
So any horizon on when it'll be done? Like a ribbon, are you going to do ribbon cutting or something like that?
We've talked about it. I wanted to do it the 31st, is what my original plan was, but that's gone out the window. I don't know, yeah, we'll probably do something.
Oh, we're going to do something? Yeah, what the heck?
Ban, we could ban.
We just, we just have to get it done first.
All right, I need a motion in a second, please, to pay the bills.
So moved.
Second. Second. All right, Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Graves.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. Stelzer.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right, pay the bills. All right, I don't think we have any committee reports tonight, but we are going to go ahead and assign a couple of things. We're going to move the building department fees into.
Public Works.
Public Works. So you will be working with Bob and, I think Bob's already got a schedule, essentially?
And Rod and.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so we'll be putting that into, to your committee. And Avia, you wanted, you want to take out?
Well, we're talking about the fence. That should probably wait until I do my report, right?
It could, yes.
Or can we do it now?
The fence being invisible?
The invisible fence.
Oh, the invisible.
I was just assuming I would have to wait until I do my report for the next meeting, and then we can move it then.
Yeah.
I don't think we're in a huge rush. I'm sure Randy's not like jumping at the bit to get to it. But I did want to put in, back into my committee, parking on West Street, no parking on West Street.
Parking on West Street. Yeah, we, we got to do something about that parking.
Yeah, I've had numerous complaints since we did what we did, which was limiting the parking from, to seven, no parking 7 to 9 a.m. in its spots, but it just continues to be a problem.
I know, I go, like, as I said, I drive through there almost every morning, and it's, it's always a minefield to sort of.
Somebody's going to get clocked.
Yeah, it's, so we'll put that back in my committee. I think we can look at it rather quickly.
Big old gallon of yellow paint will take care of that.
Keep John busy with his paint.
All right. All right, miscellaneous, beggars' night.
Hey, Bill, did you want to talk about those other two committees now?
Oh, yes, we do. We do want to talk, yes, we do want to talk about the other two. The sort of, the subcommittees.
Yeah, or temporary committees.
Temporary, the way we're going to structure that, yeah. You want to go ahead and explain it for us?
Well, you're the mayor, you kind of have to make a committee.
Yes, we're going to create two subcommittees, you know, regarding economic development and regarding.
Village administration and strategic planning.
Right.
Right.
I don't have, I don't have a copy of your report laid out. Yeah, for the two items. Well, because before they'd been, yeah, it was to the finance committee and to the economic zoning, but I think Kelly had another idea.
I think, well, I mean, what we had talked about was, you know, putting economic, some aspects of it in economic planning and development, and then other aspects into finance, and then perhaps I would be a liaison between the two. But I'm wondering if it'd be more efficient for us to create a subcommittee for economic development with Marcy, Randy, and myself.
Yes.
And then another committee for the purposes of the strategic, well, you know, addressing the village administrator needs or strategic planning with myself, Rob, and Randy. So that was my idea, suggestion.
And that's essentially, right, as we discussed at the last time, and then essentially, though, the economic development part of it would sort of take the lead, because depending on what happens within that group, you want to sort of dovetail it in. For the village administrator part.
Yes.
Just separate from the strategic planning part. Yes, yes, yeah. Are we going to call this anything? Are we going to have a name for this?
What's your, God, what's your ideas? I don't know. Can we think about it?
Sure, sure. Other than, other than essentially, we're basically all here to do it this way, I don't think that. Because I think, Kelly, what we were talking about was trying to find a consultant to help us with economic development, right? Right. And then, I think that's the only, you know, so, because before it was listed as agreement with Ken Geist to work on economic development, but I think it's a broader to say, we need, we need, he's one of them, he's one of them. Yeah, he's part of it. But there's other people you guys are, I think, going to.
From that regard, yeah. I just think this puts the proper people in the proper place.
Because it kind of started finance, but it should be in economic.
Right.
Marcy should kind of have a lead. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I like the fact, I like Kelly's idea that you got Randy and Kelly providing that consistency, because, you know, Randy was also part of the interviewing for the administrative village administrators, so he's seen that aspect of it. I think it's good for him to be on both groups as well, so. Okay, all right. Marcy, you got thoughts?
I'm fine with it.
You're fine with it?
Do we need to vote on it, or just?
I mean, that's what I suggested at the last meeting anyway, just making it more formal.
Informal in a way, I mean, I don't know. Want to have a show of hands? Do we all agree to this?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I think we're good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that extensive explanation.
You're welcome.
All right, beggars' night. I thought of Rob for some reason.
Nice, nice segue there, Bill.
That will be. You're getting, you're not getting any candy at my house, Bill, when you go around. That will be Sunday, October the 31st, and it will occur between 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. And please let us have good weather. I think, I think, actually, I do think the forecast, Avia, is going to be good.
It is, which we're more worried about the pig than we are. It's a long day.
It's a long day.
Long day.
Long day, with nice weather would be.
Rick, are any other communities doing them on Saturday instead of Sunday?
I so wish that we would just choose Saturday before or after Halloween every year, and it'd just be the same, but it's.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I can remember in the past, I mean, it was like, we set the date, and I don't care what was happening. If it could be rain, sleet, or snow, you're like a little postal worker out there if you wanted to go around and get your candy.
Sure, 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 yeah.
All right, that's, as it stands now, that's the date. Leaf season collection will begin October the 21st, that's Monday.
Today.
Yes, today.
That's today.
They came by today.
They came by today, I saw them driving around, and it's going to run through December the 23rd. I'll be announcing this every couple of weeks. And please, please, anyone listening out there, we've heard the discussion in here tonight, do not rake the leaves, you know, into the street, you know, we'll, we'll try and have better, you know, better coordination, better timing, you know, for pickup, so it doesn't kill your, your grass and so on and so forth.
You can always bag them.
Or you can always bag them, as John says. Oh, yeah, okay, so let's all, can we all maybe agree, we want to set that December, you know, we only have one council meeting in the month of December, and normally for Tony's benefit, we try to have that a little later in the month.
Yeah, me and he are going to try to get that done a little earlier this year in November with the new system.
We looked at the Monday before Christmas, but.
Yeah.
Kind of thing, thought that might be enough time for you, but not.
But was that, was that a little late then, or what?
No, that's fine. We can, if we don't get it done then, then that'll give us plenty of time.
Time to, to catch up?
Yeah.
So that would be the week of, you know. December the 20th.
Is that Monday?
It's a Monday. It's the third Monday. Okay. All right, so let's agree, December the 20th, then, we'll have that final meeting of the year.
So we will not meet on the 13th, which would be the normal.
Correct. No, there's only just the one meeting, yeah.
My last meeting.
Joe's too, yeah.
It's going to be all Santa.
Joe's too.
Yeah, yeah, we can wear your Santa hats and make it festive. All right, village offices will be closed December for Thanksgiving, this is December 25th and 26th.
November.
November, yeah, of course, November, yes.
Thanksgiving is the 25th?
Is it?
I think so.
I think it is. Is it? Yeah.
Thank you.
Better get your turkeys early. I hear there's going to be a little bit of a supply chain issue on turkeys this year.
Tofu will be available.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sounds delicious. All right, the pool RFP, we've already pretty much covered that. I'm going to have to ask you all to bear with us tonight, because, you know, we've got several resolutions and a couple of ordinances, all of which, the bulk of which, are going to go on emergency. We're going to be busy in here. Hold on, hold on, I lost my place. Yeah, it's the tax levy one?
To accept the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission in authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and to declare emergency.
All right, you've heard the first reading. I need a motion in a second to suspend the rules and allow for the second and third reading, please.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Second. Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Graves.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. Stelzer.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right, may we have the second reading?
To accept the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission in authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and to declare emergency.
Okay, there any, and this is, any discussion here, any questions? We all understand what this is? Well, no, can you explain, Tony?
This is just the compliance thing that the county goes through their calculations and says, okay, this is the amount of money that your levies are going to be getting this year, and they send it to us, and then we have to like, agree or certify it, and then send it, send something back, send this back to them. So it's something we do every year.
Yeah, yeah. Well, good. May I have the third reading?
To accept the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission in authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and to declare an emergency.
All right, I need a motion and a second to adopt.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Bartlett.
Hi.
Mrs. Graves.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. Stelzer.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right, that'll be adopted. All right, moving on.
Resolution authorizing the filing of an urban canopy restoration grant application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and to declare emergency.
All right, you've heard the first reading. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Okay, finished it and allow for a second, third reading. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Bartlett.
Hi.
Mrs. Graves.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. Stelzer.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right, may we have the second reading, please?
Yes, resolution authorizing the filing of an urban canopy restoration grant application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and to declare emergency.
Okay, any discussion? Would you like to, Jason, you want to add anything for this? You want to say anything?
Jason, do you want to say a little bit about it?
I certainly can.
Sure.
Yeah, this is a grant application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. It's a very rare grant opportunity. They usually don't have funding to plant trees, and so what we're seeking, it's a 50-50 match for the grant, and so we're using, we're looking to use already approved funds in John Chervonberg's budget to plant trees next year, and we're going to use, goodness, I forget where we're at, like $6,800 cash match. Basically, we'll have $8,000 in match, and we're going to ask for $8,000 from the grant to plant 40 trees. We'll have, you know, a lot of the trees will be along Marymont Avenue, and then the other part of those trees will be in what we call District Six, the Homewood, Saddle, kind of in that area. So it's a great opportunity for us and probably won't have this opportunity in the future, so.
How many trees?
It'd be 40 trees in total.
Forty trees, and they're, and did I, most of them are going to be oaks? Is that, did I hear that, read that right?
Well, not necessarily. So we've got, so 13 of them will be large oaks, Schumard oaks, those will be on Marymont Avenue.
Okay.
And then we'll have, I believe, around 11 are medium-sized trees, and then we have 17 small trees, because in District Six, we got a lot of power lines, we got a lot of small sidewalk areas, so we have to have trees that are less than 20 feet in height.
Yeah.
So we've got a fair amount of those in that area, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Hey.
For those of you who don't know, our tree committee has been hard at work assessing these areas and going through a scientific process to evaluate spaces for trees, and we look at a lot of different variables with that. And Barb Whittaker back here has led effort, and Mary Beth York and Kristen Van Scoey have worked, been out, and Jason have been out working really hard to do that. And then Jason has, you know, basically put together this grant, which is a great opportunity for us to get some help planting some trees.
Great.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, can't thank you enough.
Yeah, no problem, glad to help, yeah.
Yeah. All right, may we have the third reading, please?
Resolution authorizing the filing of an urban canopy restoration grant application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and to declare emergency.
All right, motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Mr. Bartlett.
Hi.
Mrs. Graves.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. Stelzer.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right, that'll be adopted.
All right, next one, resolution approving interfund advance of $125,000 from the general fund to the paramedic fund and to declare emergency.
All right, you've had the first reading. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and allow for the second, third readings?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bartlett.
Hi.
Mrs. Graves.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. Stelzer.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
May we have the second reading, please?
Yes, resolution approving interfund advance of $125,000 from the general fund to the paramedic fund and to declare emergency.
You want to briefly tell us about that?
Yeah, so with the paramedic fund, we, that gets funded by real estate taxes that come in in April, and let's say August or September, and the fund typically pay the paramedics out of the fund the first half of the year, and then we, then we switch it over to the fire department the second half of the year.
Yeah.
We've done that, been doing that for years. It's just easier on Joni administratively, but when we changed the new software and Rich Ford advised us that we really shouldn't do it that way, that we shouldn't go negative like that, we should get a, an advance from the general fund. So, so with the new software, we had to move, you know, $125,000 over to cover that fund.
Right.
Because it was down below, you know, well below zero at that time. So this will eventually get paid back to the general fund once that paramedic fund gets replenished from the real estate taxes. But it's just a thing to cover so it doesn't, so it's not below zero.
So this may be the last time we're going to do it this way?
Yeah, because we're going to switch how payroll is paid out. We can now code like 50% of payroll to paramedic and 50% to fire, where before it was just too administratively difficult to do that in the system. So we may still need to do some in 2022 because we know we don't get that money until April.
Sure, yeah, okay. Anybody, any questions? I mean, we do this every year, it's, it's pretty standard stuff. Okay. May we have the third reading?
Resolution approving interfund advance of $125,000 from the general fund to the paramedic fund and to declare emergency.
All right, need a motion and a second, please, to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Mr. Bartlett.
Hi.
Mrs. Graves.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. Stelzer.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right, that'll be adopted.
On the fire truck.
Yeah, this is, this is the one that was at, this is the last one, the one that was out of the lake, yeah?
All right, authorizing the sale of the 2003 Seagrave series model JB4 ODD fire apparatus and declaring an emergency.
All right, you've heard the first reading. I need a motion and a second to suspend the rules.
So moved. Sorry, I'm pulling Rob Bartlett, going, how do you?
All right, I, I know it's getting a little late.
No, we're just excited about it.
Mr. Bartlett.
Hi.
Mrs. Graves.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. Stelzer.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right, may we have the second reading, please?
Yes, authorizing the sale of 2003 Seagrave series model JB ODD fire apparatus and declaring an emergency.
All right, any discussion on this?
Yeah, I've got one question.
Sure.
Was this even on the agenda that was distributed to the public?
It. It came out late.
Yeah.
Because there's also an ordinance regarding this, and it was, there was, I guess, a little bit of confusion here, that we needed, we needed both a resolution and an ordinance.
But again, was it on the agenda?
Well, yes.
It was on a revised agenda, right?
Revised agenda, yes.
But the revised agenda went out when?
Today.
Did I get a copy of that?
You should have.
It should have, it was sent out.
Is that enough time? I mean, Ed's shaking his head, no.
I hate to be a guy who puts a kibosh on this deal, but in order, here's what I know, Joe, and I spoke about this last Thursday, we were presented by Park Hills with a pretty favorable, favorable price for this fire truck, and we didn't have a use on a couple of years, and we wanted to take advantage of their immediate need for it. I prepared both the resolution, which we need to do, which declares the property no longer necessary for municipal purposes. We sent it over here for some reason, and I also prepared the ordinance, which would allow us to sell this property in a different fashion than typically following the Ohio Revised Code. Perfectly legal, a lot of, a lot of municipalities do it. But Bill and I talked about this earlier this afternoon. I feel very uncomfortable passing this resolution on an emergency basis tonight because it was not on the agenda, and only because it was not on the agenda. It was just an oversight. I don't know if it's on my part, Bill's part, or whomever, it doesn't really make any difference, but it was an oversight, so I think.
Well, let's just say if we passed it without proper notice, couldn't somebody come back and challenge it?
Absolutely.
I mean, it's pretty dangerous to do it this way.
And I think particularly, Joe, because it's being passed on an emergency basis, you know, and again, I talked with Bill about this, I'm sure he's going to be disappointed with what I'm saying right now, but we, we got to do this one right, we really do, because people may give us some pushback on it. The best way to do it, to fix this issue, is if you guys can, have a special meeting of council on Friday, or, what do you say, Thursday? Have a meeting on Thursday, publish a meeting on Thursday for the sole purpose of entering into a resolution to declare this piece of equipment no longer necessary, and then we can still go forward and pass this ordinance tonight.
Still pass the ordinance.
But, but, so, I mean, if Park Hills can't wait until Friday or Saturday to do this.
Yeah, but I, do we run the rest, though, if we wait until the next council meeting?
Say it again.
Of losing the opportunity?
But again, if we have an emergency meeting.
No, I'm, well, I'm, so, I'm saying, I'm totally in agreement with the idea of having a special meeting of council.
Yeah, and that's probably, that means you guys have to come here one more time this week.
Well, it would only be for just a couple of minutes. Thursday would be the soonest available. Rick?
Hi. Park Hills will be okay if you have a special meeting on Thursday and pass it, and then they can come and get the truck or whatever on Friday.
I'd rather you do it that way, I really would.
I'm asking, though, is Thursday the, the most soonest available? Could it be on Wednesday? What's, what's the time?
What can I notice?
Yeah, well, how much, what's the notice? Is it?
24 hours.
24 hours.
So if it went out tomorrow.
We could do it on Wednesday.
Well, it went out today, right?
You got to send out a new, a notice about the special meeting.
Because we're changing.
About the special meeting, yeah. So, yeah, Wednesday's the earliest you could do.
Yeah, we'll do it whenever.
You can do it Wednesday, you can do it Thursday, whichever one you want to do.
Does.
What's people availability?
Does Wednesday, who, does Wednesday work?
Yeah, I can do Wednesday.
Wednesday.
So I, I got an additional question.
It depends, Wednesday, because I've got a pruning.
We'd want to do it earlier in the evening and later, most preferred.
This notice is one question, but then there's a question about the process that we got to this point. You know, this thing kind of came out of the blue pretty, pretty quickly. I mean, we, we got noticed of it by an email a week ago. Okay, and my question is, is how much of a marketing process do we go through to figure out whether Park Hills has given us the right amount, or whether there's other people that might be interested in this thing? What I've been told is that it was basically the informal network that you found Park Hills in the process. And I'm a little concerned about that process, and also being told, well, you got to make a decision right away. I almost feel like I'm going to use car lot to some extent here. And so, again, I probably would lean towards doing it, but I'm not happy that, you know, all of a sudden, this is being dropped on us with very little time and very little process to identify potential other bidders or purchasers of this equipment.
And you make a good point, Joe, you make a good point. And, but, as I said, to, to help assuage some of those concerns of yours, like I said, Mike Washington went ahead and prepared comps for us as to what other trucks of that year and vintage would be, and I have those, and I think I shared those with you. And then I went ahead and contacted a broker dealer who deals in used fire equipment. I know I sent you the email.
But that's a little bit different, Bill, about publishing an ad and asking for people to come back in, because you don't know who else might be looking at it at this point. I mean, I don't, I'm not comfortable with this process. And again, you know, we can make this decision, and we can find out later that it was a bad decision. You're, you're putting the council at risk by rushing this thing through. And again, I would probably lean towards doing it, but I'm not comfortable. And again, this truck has been, in one email said, it's been sitting down there for two years, being very rarely used. Why suddenly in a week do we have to make this call?
Because Park Hills came forward and the truck seems to meet.
But why didn't we start marketing it sometime in the last two years if we knew it was excess equipment?
Well, actually, it was talked about. We did talk about, basically, whether we should keep the truck or not keep the truck.
I thought, just to make, this is when I first saw the emails, just the question that came up, and maybe I misunderstood it, but I thought that part of how we build with getting the new one is that we were going to use, and we were still doing mutual aid, and we were going to build back, and, and I thought we were using it when we had the opportunity. I didn't realize it had been sitting there for two years.
I think it's the ambulance.
That was the ambulance.
The ambulance, yeah, was going to be, essentially.
So this is one that's just, totally has just been sitting there.
Yeah, more or less, right.
I got them confused.
Because we bought the new ladder truck when you were on council before, right?
Yeah, that was done.
2012.
2000, yeah, 2012.
Yeah.
It's almost nine years ago now.
Yeah, yeah. This, the Seagrave is an 03. I mean, we, it's, it's been around, yeah.
Again, I'm just not comfortable with the process, and I think it, you know, exposes us to, you know, a little bit of a problem that we, we can't say, yeah, there was a rigorous marketing process for this piece of equipment.
Well, we can't, you're right, Joe, we probably, we may not be able to say that. However, on the other hand, I can, I, I'm confident that this, this offer on this truck is probably the best that we will ever see, based on all the comps, based on what FireTech has told me, that if, if we were to place the truck with them, what we could expect to get for the truck.
Plus the commission it would cost.
Yeah, and plus there'd be a 10% commission on top of it. I mean, it's not, Joe, it's not even half. They wouldn't get us half what we're being offered. I'm, I'm just completely comfortable that we're not.
We'll agree to disagree. I just think there should have been a, a more defined process, probably, seeing, there's, you know, as we were talking about on the RP before, we send that thing out and, and put it out for two to four weeks to give everybody a chance to come in and bid on the thing. I just don't see that here. And it may be the right number, maybe the wrong number, I don't know, but you, you typically let the market determine whether it's the right number or wrong number. And I don't think we've gone to the market.
You do, but in this particular case, I do believe that we have a, a buyer with special needs. The truck meets their needs, and they have a time element that they, they would like to, they'd like to come pick the truck up tomorrow, but I don't, I just don't want it jeopardized.
We'll agree to this, I agree. I just put it at that.
If I could weigh in on that second, Joe, I agree 100% with what you're saying. It's not been a perfect process, that is for sure, but the new ordinance that we have, that, that I basically did the research on this, the law is different if we're going to sell this to another municipality that has a need for this, an urgent need for this. The new ordinance that we're passing today does not change what the Ohio Revised Code says about going out for a public bid if we, in fact, are going to sell this to anybody and everybody who wants it. But if it's a municipality who contacts us, we're allowed to sell it without a competitive bid process. So I think it's a little different, but it may be a difference without a distinction. I completely appreciate your point, though. This is the type of thing that probably shouldn't come up so quickly like this without you guys having an opportunity to evaluate it, but I think the mayor has done a real yeoman's job in getting together all the comparables, and I know that the firefighters have done a lot of work to get them to, that at least he feels comfortable that we're getting the maximum price we can get for this thing. So it's up to you guys as to how you proceed, really.
Did you want to share a couple thoughts with us?
Yeah, the big thing is, is taking off the commendations of the report that you guys just spent money to have done. We have some overhead. I came to the board, the offer came to us because they borrowed our truck, because they have a historic station, they needed to see how the size of the truck would fit. Just like you did for your ladder truck, Sycamore Township brought their ladder truck down here multiple times and backed it into your station. This is not an undue process. What came out of that was, they said, well, what would you guys like for that? I told them I didn't know. Okay? They put in an offer for $100,000, and then they came back one day for $125,000, and it saved them from having to do a bunch of work. I want you guys to do the right thing as well. But I've just been hammered for eight months talking about budgets and money and spending, and I have a plan to give you back some money into your plan and work ahead as this village and make us back into where we're not having to rob Peter to pay Paul. I've said that to him from day one, Mr. Bartlett, we'll agree, this is one of these options that comes. We have some stuff that this current fire chief and assistant chief agree that I don't know if we really need to be spending on the insurance, the pump testing, everything that we're doing, outfitting that. We're bleeding money on some of these things. This is your guys' choice. If you want me to keep it, I'll park it right back in the fire station.
I'm not saying that, Dan. What I'm saying is, I'd like to see, you know, I, I have a fair amount of experience in marketing assets.
Yeah, I do.
On fire trucks.
Not fire trucks, though, bud. I gave you a ton of comps.
You have to know what you don't know, Joe.
So you're comfortable, you're comfortable with this offer?
I think it's over what it's worth.
That's what I, that was my.
I'm done.
Okay. I mean, I've sat and listened to pools, we've done all that, we've done our comps, we do our homework as well. But for eight months, this has been going on, and these are some of the decisions that have came from the report that was written, they're coming out there. Because it came quick, so did the report, so did us getting raked over the coals.
All right, look, I think, I think we've got a plan here going forward, so let's, let's agree, we're going to, we'll do the resolution on Wednesday.
Somebody should move to table this resolution, because it wasn't on the agenda, and you guys should set up a point, a time to come in for a special meeting on Wednesday with, where this will be the only item on that agenda.
Yeah, I was about to ask what, what time works for.
I could edit you.
No, it's all right, it's all right.
I can move to do that, if you'd like.
Six o'clock on, anytime I'm good. 5:30, I can make it if need to.
5:30.
You have mayor's court, right?
Oh, yeah, we got a mayor's.
We got a mayor's court. We got a mayor's court.
Mayor's court starts at 5:00.
5:00.
Can you do it early? Because it's only going to take you a few minutes.
Yeah.
I can do things at lunchtime.
You know, you could do part of it by Zoom if you want to, I don't know how to do it.
Well, look, look, why don't we just, look, I mean, one more day, why don't we just say Thursday?
But let's be sure we're not shooting ourselves in the foot by saying Thursday.
Are you going to do that?
With a gun?
Well, Rick, I mean, you, I mean, Park Hills, I mean, they're going to, will they go to?
We'll be okay.
You'll be okay? All right.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's say Thursday at 6:00.
Sure.
Or did you want to do it earlier, Avi, because?
I prefer earlier.
Like what, 5?
5.
5?
5:30, either one.
I think we have MPF at some, don't we?
Yeah, you do have MPF. We have, we have a 3 to 4 here, right?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we have a minute here.
Can, is 4 too early? 4:30?
I, I don't have a child, I have to leave the kids, I get off the bus.
Bring them along.
I mean.
4:00 or 5:00?
Yeah, we only need 5:00.
So, but, so you want, you can be here when?
I can do 5:00.
Let's just, we do 5:00?
Let's do 5:00, can we all do 5:00?
Thursday at 5:00.
Thursday at 5:00, okay, so we need a.
The 28th at 5:00.
Okay, so we need a, we need a motion?
Just to table, just to table this resolution, that's all you need.
Avia did that.
Okay, Avia, do I hear a second, please?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Bartlett.
Hi.
Mrs. Graves.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. Stelzer.
Aye.
And, uh, Mr. York.
Hi.
Okay. All right, well, that was easy. All right, so I think that was the last of the resolutions, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, first ordinance?
Ordinance amending section 151.04 of the Merrymont Code of Ordinances regarding fence construction.
That was tabled.
Tabled.
We do, we do that, we do that every time.
I was looking for it earlier.[1430.37]